I'd like to call this regular meeting to order for the Bayfield Town Board for Tuesday, March 18th of 2025. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Here.
Trustee Zizaro.
Here.
Trustee Hartz.
Here.
Trustee Katzos.
Here.
Trustee Morland.
Here.
Trustee McLaurin. And Mayor Ah.
Here. All rides for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Does the board have any conflicts of interest?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
I do for, I do for six A. So you'll be running the meeting at that point?
Okay.
Um, is there any general public input for anything not on the agenda?
Brian Blanchard, 627 Louisiana Drive. Just as a citizen, it'd be nice to have an update of a permanent town manager and a possible community development director, kind of where we're at. We don't really have a way to know that, so it'd be nice to kind of get an update.
Any other public input?
Good evening. Josh Josworth, 64 South Los Peanuts Drive, Bayfield. Don't take what I'm going to say as accusations or innuendos, or they're just observations. But if the shoe fits. It's no stretch to say that there are MAGA folk in town. And they have every right to be MAGA folk. And there's nothing I can say to them to change their minds if they hold the view that government is bad and the destruction of our federal government is good. And that's a view that they hold deeply. Broad brush, government's bad. Now, to put this in perspective, I have fought the federal government and cussed them. I've fought the state government and cussed them, and more often than not, I've lost those fights. And I cussed that too. And that's when I realized that the importance of strong, stable, local government. That's the government that matters most. And that's what we need to have here right now in Bayfield, a strong, stable, local government. And I didn't use a broad brush on government. I think personal opinion using broad brush is just too easy. It's a lazy way of thinking. And those are views that I hold deeply. And right now, our federal government's being dismantled. Personally, I think it's a sad, disconcerting, and dangerous spectacle. Purportedly done to destroy the deep state. This, here in Bayfield, this is not a place for that drama to play out. There is no deep state in Bayfield. It's not at work here, and it doesn't benefit the town for anybody to think that there is. This is Bayfield, it's a town of 2,900 hardworking people. Who expect their town government to deliver services in a professional manner because that's what town governments do. They deliver services in a professional manner. Public works, parks and rec, planning, cops. Services, it's what a town does, it isn't complicated. These services departments deliver are not deep state. We do not have a bloated bureaucracy in Bayfield. These departments are core to the mission of town government, and as electeds, that's your responsibility to deliver services. The positions you hold, mayor, trustees, these are nonpartisan. You didn't run as Democrats, or Republicans, or MAGA's. You ran as people who purportedly wanted to be entrusted with the care of our town. And governing is hard. I know it, I've done it. But it's necessary, and local government is extremely necessary. And it's real easy to screw it up if you want to. And I have faith that you will behave as people who take their responsibilities seriously and will grapple with how to govern. Not from some political agenda, but for the good of our citizens. And I want to thank you for your service, and thank you for letting me speak this evening.
Thanks, Josh.
Dustin, can you make a note that trustee McLaurin showed up?
Good evening, Lucy Stewart, resident of Bayfield in 77. One thing I see, and it's really concerning to me, is this stormwater that's up at the Commons. Sorry, I'm kind of biting my throat. But that stormwater up in the Commons, I think, to me, I've talked before and asked about the water in the northeast corner where the two culverts are. And I've been noticing there now is a ditch that runs towards the, that somebody dug a ditch along the pens there that's, looks like maybe it's going to carry that water coming out of those two culverts down in that subdivision. I don't think that is something that can be done, but I don't think the stormwater in the Commons has been addressed. I really expect us, if we get any kind of weather, any kind of rains, any kind of storms, we're going to get nailed. I don't think that that stormwater pond that's there at the bottom of Commons is going to hold anything. I don't think it's going to do anything, I don't know what that it's supposed to do, but I, I just see a disaster coming on. And I hope that the town is aware of what's going on and that it is being addressed. Whether it's through here, through planning commission, where it needs to be addressed, I think it needs to be handled and taken care of before we have too many issues with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
David Wack, 606 Buck Highway. I want to echo what Josh did. And Alexis, I'm still asking the question, why are you still here? I don't want you, I don't want you weighing in on any question of employment of any of our leadership in this community. I think you need to step down, I really do. It's wrong for you to be here. You need to step down.
Hey, I'm Andrew Kloss, Silver Mountain Group, we're working on the Cinnamon Heights project. I just want to give you a little update. Since I last saw you, it's been about six weeks because I missed your last meeting, but we were waiting on materials. We got the materials, a bunch of fancy concrete over there. I think we used the time in between there. It's not very exciting to look at, but we cleaned up some survey issues on the lot. We've, so we've been getting stuff done in the background. But now we're starting to work on the sewers. That'll go through most of the spring, and we'll start on the retaining walls. And, you know, hopefully we'll, now we're trucking on it again, so. I just wanted to show up and give you guys an update, give you a chance to ask a question if you had one, or otherwise I'll see you in a few weeks.
I certainly, I certainly appreciate it, I really do.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate the updates.
Any other public input? Moving on to the community grant request. Wolverine Wonders Homeschool.
Hello, good evening. Good evening, mayor and board. This is new to me, so. When I start homeschooling, there was one kind of support that I did not find in our area. And that was the kind of support where I was also welcome to be there because there's a reason why most parents homeschool is because they want to be part of their children's journey academically. And we have great resources in the area, we have Hope, we have Silver Spruce, we have so many good places. None of those would let me stay. I was like, I want to stay, I want to stay with my kids. I want to participate, I want to be part of it, I want to teach them a little bit too. Sorry, I didn't introduce myself, my name is Melina Smith. I live on 346 Kramer Drive, just repeating the example that I saw everybody doing. So when I was searching for that kind of support and I didn't find it, I looked to start my own group, which I turned into a nonprofit last April, so we're about to turn a year. And it's been working so good, we served 14 families on this time. May seem little, but for a brand new nonprofit, it was very, very, it was very good for all the kids, so. We have groups, what we provide is group learning opportunities for those kids where the parents are not only welcomed, but they are required. So we are a privately funded nonprofit, we don't qualify for any government money because we're not a school, and I don't want to resemble a school, so we don't have a facilitator, we don't have a teacher. What we do is like I provide the whole structure for whatever activity we're doing. And then the parents come together and each lead a little portion, so it's like a collaborative effort. And we just make those situations happen for the kids. This past year, we held, we held two mini classes a week. And the mini classes are like a two-hour-long session that mimics a whole school day, so we have like a little start and blocks and a little break. We just don't feel like they need to be all day in a room, since they have work at home too. So, but we still, I still wanted them to have that feeling like I'm going to school. I have a break, I have snacks, I have my friends, because just play dates, we're not doing it. When you homeschool, it's very hard to fill that gap of intentional social interaction. Where the kids are together, not just to play, but they're doing something together. I made partnerships in the community with the Mixed Palette, which is, it's like a art business, they do pinnaceps, so they do pinnacep kits for us, that we provide the juice and the kids get to paint. We also partnered with Elevated Martial Arts, and they did a self-defense program for us. All that is voluntarily of them, so that was very generous, their time, the space. And that's what we've been doing for the next school year. We're going to keep all the programs that we had, and we're going to start a book club. We're going to do a senior day where we're going to take the kids to go to the senior centers. We're going to do a gardening project too, with a local gardener, that local farmer. And we're just excited to come up with like opportunities for those kids to get together and learn together. Do you guys have any questions? I feel like I could talk for hours and hours about the nonprofit. I'm so passionate about it, I could just go on and on, but yes.
Have you done much work with the Treehouse?
I did, so a few years ago when my daughter was born, I was in their board for a while. And then I had just postpartum issues, and I had to handle myself for a while. And then when I came back, was right on that homeschooling stage, so I came back to the Treehouse and that's, that's who hosts our activities is, I talked to Nicole, and she gives us a room, so our classes are there upstairs.
It just seems they offer a lot of the same kind of things, and it'd be a good partnership. I know we support, we support them.
Yes, we, we also do our best to support them, we got a grant from the Valentines. In half of it, we donated, we forwarded to the Treehouse because without them, we wouldn't have a place. The library also hosts a lot of our activities, which is amazing. The Treehouse has a lot of like play opportunities, she doesn't want to focus too much on academics. When I started the nonprofit, I asked her if she wanted to make that a Treehouse program. I was going to give it to her, basically. And she said she didn't want to go to the academic area, so that's why I ended up opening a whole new nonprofit to accommodate, because at that point, I was also absorbing all the financials out of my pocket, we're a single-income family, only my husband works, I homeschool. So that was another reason that motivated me to turn the group into a nonprofit, so I could ask from people that has the money to donate, so I can offer that back to the community for what I honestly think is a very symbolic price. I charge a hundred dollars for the whole school year, for the whole family, so if you have two, three, four, five kids, it's a hundred dollars for the whole year. And I provide everything, all the material, the craft material, the space, the planning, everything.
So, Melina, is this, you said parents have to be involved? And these are all families that are homeschooling as well, so is this, they'll, and I'm just not really familiar with homeschooling, so that's why I'm asking. So is this a place where all those kids can get together and have those, kind of those group activities, and then they have their other homeschool curriculum that they complete when they're with their families at home?
Yes, exactly, so it's like, we don't provide a curriculum they can follow. I have a bachelor in biomedical science, but I'm not a teacher, so I didn't want to like, it didn't make sense to open this, I just really wanted a co-op. But every parent have their own curriculum that they choose, and I don't interfere, I have my own that I follow with my kids. Some use the Good and the Beautiful, some use like, so they come to the nonprofit just for the physical interaction.
No, thank you for that. What are the age ranges of the children who are involved?
Right now, I have kids, because parent participation is required, that helps kids as young as like three-year-olds to participate well, because their parents, they can give us, if they need any help, they get that individual help. But I would say they range from three to, my oldest is nine.
Okay.
I tried to launch a team program, and I was very, it was very well-accepted by the community, but I didn't find any homeschool teams. So I'm holding off on that, but it was supposed to be like a weekly conversation with someone in the community that is specialized in something. And we had had an EMT from the fire department say that he would do a session. The detective from the police department said he would do a session about cyberbullying and things like that. And I was very excited, but I couldn't find the homeschool teams. So my cutout right now is nine years old.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are your kids located in the town of Bayfield, or are they up and down the valley?
All of them, but one family in Hermosa. Yeah, I think they all, Bayfield, I don't even think we have families in Ignacio yet, but yeah, there's one family in Hermosa, most of them are in Bayfield.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I couldn't tell what she answered on that last one, was the families in town, Bayfield, or out of town?
I have one family in Hermosa, and then all the others are here.
So most in town?
Yes, I have families visit from Pedoza and, and Ignacio and all, but they didn't get a membership, so that's why I'm not counting, like from the members, they're all from Bayfield and one from Hermosa.
And then are they in town limit?
I believe so, mostly Forest Lake or around here.
Any other questions from the board?
Not from Melina, I'm good.
I really appreciate the opportunity, the time, and you guys considering this grant. Like I said, we don't qualify for government grants, so this is very important, and I appreciate your service and all you do for our town, I love living here, and I love this place, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Can you let us know where we're at on the grant process?
Yes, we've done, all the 1,500 ones are gone, this would be, if approved, would be the last $1,000 one, and then we are 300 through the school fund, the rest is available still. The downtown ones, of course, are assigned to Heritage Days and block parties and things of that nature.
Mr. Black?
I would urge you to not give these groups $1,000. And I do that reluctantly because I'm a teacher. That's what I am, I'm a trained teacher. And education is about as important a thing as there is. However, coming to the town and asking for money to support essentially a charter school-type endeavor is the wrong place to be asking for money. And it's the wrong approach. I mean, we support a lot of things here, but we need to be more judicious with where that money goes. I don't think it's a good place to spend it right now. You take that $1,000 and give it to Pine River Shares, give it to the Treehouse, there's several other endeavors in the community that could use that $1,000, but don't give it to a private, private education group. Thank you.
May I speak on that, please? I understand your concerns, but this is not a private institution, I don't get paid.
If you're charging for it, it's private.
A hundred dollars for the, we have hundreds.
It's private.
I don't make any money, not at all, I can show you all my books from day one right now, I have them on my phone. I don't make any money, I can show you my receipts.
There's two types of schools, there's public and there's private, if it's not public, it's private.
If it's a nonprofit, it's not, it's not private. No, there's no nonprofit that is private, anywhere in the United States.
So you're not public school?
I'm not a public school, but I'm not a private institution at all.
The whole point is that you're not a public school?
No, the whole point is that nonprofits, nonprofits are not private institutions. I can be voted out, and someone else can take over, it's not my business, I don't get paid. So maybe the concept of nonprofit and private institution.
Nonprofit, we're not, not arguing that you're considered private.
But it's not private, how is it private? How is a nonprofit private?
Then you're not public school.
I understand I'm not a public school because I'm not associated with the government, that doesn't make it private.
It's semantic in my eyes, you know, if you're not a public school, you're considered private. And, and I really don't want to like continue to argue over that fact, but it's not a public school, so that's my biggest point is it's not public.
It's, it's not a public school, I think you're both arguing something different. Brenna, you're pointing out school, she's pointing out nonprofit, and we have a certificate of fact of good standing for a nonprofit organization, which is the reason she's coming for us. She's not coming to start a school or, or run a private institution. It's a nonprofit organization.
There have been a lot of families that found community.
I was clarifying what David was saying, and he was trying privately to point out that it's not a public school.
I, it is not a public school, man, I agree with that. It's a nonprofit, and we, we. Yeah, we causing, we, we creating community with homeschool families that also feel like they don't fit anywhere. I have a lot of families asking about, when are we opening again? And I do respect anybody that feels like this is not worth it, because everybody's going to feel like their own project is worth it. But I am there every day, I see what that means for those families, for those moms, and the family is expecting me to come back, so they can come back with us. So for someone that has never been to any activity, we've been, we've done, or the Valentine's Day where we've been delivering cookies to the whole town, and the kids had to experience going to the library that serves us so much, going to the, the police department, the fire department. So for someone that don't see the day-to-day of the co-op and how impactful it's been, it's so easy to just come here and be like, oh, it's not worth it. How about you ask my parents if it's worth it? Ask Ms. Nicole if it's worth it, you mentioned the Treehouse. Ms. Nicole is so supportive, she is so supportive. If she was here with me, if she could, she would say the same thing, she, because she's there at the Treehouse, she goes upstairs. She sees the classes, she sees what I'm doing, she follows the social media, it's not, I'm, like, I understand the perspective from someone that don't know the activities, but I just think it's not fair to get the perspective of someone that do not know what is happening and what we're doing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to speak, speak to that. I'm sorry. I do know what it's like to be in a classroom, I do know what it's like to be in a classroom.
You know how.
I have been a substitute teacher, ma'am. And I've been.
Wait, 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 one speaker at a time, it's just turn up. Go ahead, David.
This money belongs to the community, yes. I, I appreciate this lady's passion for her education of her children, I really do. Everybody should have that kind of passion, but it's the wrong place. It's the wrong place. Education, go to the school board, ma'am, ask them for the $1,000. Don't do it here. This, like I said, this $1,000 could be distributed other places amongst the community. Heck, we might need it for an election. Yeah, grin about it.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I do have one comment that I would personally like to make, and that is that, and I didn't quite get finished what I wanted to say earlier, I was interrupted, but, I, I very much feel like, as a town, and our citizens in our town, we do pay money to our schools, and we pay money to the public schools, and to me, the grants are meant for something to fill a need that isn't provided already. And we already provide that, our county people provide that need. I, I don't know if you guys looked at that new URL that the county sent out that did, that showed you how, what percentage you pay for schooling? But my taxes are like 50-something percent that is paid for public schools. So, I mean, I don't know, I appreciate that, you know, she's doing something right for children, and I appreciate that piece of it, but I just, I don't know if the citizens' monies would want to be spent in addition, when there's already that service provided, they just choose not to go to it.
Well, and to your point, Brenna, I feel that the monies that we've given to the Treehouse, we've already elected to give money to alternative education for preschoolers, and so I, I agree with what you're saying. I feel that there, there are other places that would probably cover a greater need for a broader group of people. 14 kids is, you know, there's the Treehouse, so I hear what you're saying.
I concur.
Plus, didn't we give a grant to the Treehouse this year?
We did.
Which is also benefiting her group because they're using her space. I mean, I think it's great and I support her, but I do think it's kind of redundant because we support the library, heck, our taxes go to the library, we supported the Treehouse.
And friends of the family, or friends of the library.
And friends of the library, I mean, we've done a lot of things, I appreciate her effort, and I think it's great, and I've worked in the past with a lot of homeschoolers, and it is very important for them to get out. Not just for the curriculum, like a school curriculum, but for do activities, sports, you know, other activities, reading, because she's got younger kids, you know, little, you know. I think it's good, but I think we have other opportunities in this area.
Yeah, I, I respect the parental choice. If you want to homeschool, I understand that, and I support individuals' right to choose what they want to do. But again, I feel taking care of as many people as we can in, in an appropriate way is a good way to do it, and we've already allocated to the Treehouse.
Anyone else?
I agree that we've already, we pay so much in taxes to schooling, and I appreciate the homeschooling aspect, but I feel like we could benefit more children in the community with the $1,000 if, through another way.
Do we need a motion one way or the other?
Yes.
Because it is, it is on the.
It's a request.
Yes. So I need, I need a motion of some sorts.
I move that we deny the request at this time for this grant proposal.
I second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes, we're denying the Wolverine Wonders Homeschool Co-op.
At this time.
For $1,000 at this time. And I second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zizaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Morland. Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next up is the.
So, mayor, if I may, we did skip 1G, the approval of the agenda, and before we move any further, perhaps we should address that.
Done that again.
It's buried in that agenda, so.
No, I never see it up there.
Yeah, it's hard to see.
Highlight that one, will you, Dustin?
Going back to 1G, approval of the. Um, going back to one G, approv- approval of the agenda, has the board had a chance to look at the agenda for this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, tonight's agenda as posted.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Morland. Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Moving on to three A, approval of minutes and department reports. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes for March fourth, twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes, um, dated March fourth nineteen, or nineteen twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Have a, um, motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katsos.
Yes.
Trustee Morland. Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Town manager report.
Well, one of the projects is this ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, and how that affects the dissemination of our information, our, our minutes, our, you know, anything that goes on in the city. And Dustin and I have been doing a little research on that. We've had a meeting, um, with one provider, which we're very pleased with. It seems like we're gonna be able to, uh, afford to get that done, and, uh, so probably at the next meeting, you may see a proposal to, um, go with this one firm and, uh, will be in compliance with. There's a deadline for, I think, July to, to have this done. However, if you're a small community, as long as you show due diligence and getting, uh, and working on that, you're, you're fine for another year, a year and a half, something like that. But we're well ahead of it, and don't worry about it. I think we're gonna, uh, be pleased with what we end up with here, so. Thanks, Dustin, we're moving forward. Um, I have, uh, the access permit applications from S E H Engineering for the access permits on the north side and the south side of the east intersection project, and this will be signed, um, probably tomorrow. I'm gonna talk to the engineer one more time, but they're already, they, they've done all the work on it, so that's moving forward. The community development director, we have, uh, a second meeting interview with an applicant next week on the twenty-fifth. So that's where that stands at this point. The, I know there's a Pine River Commons issue on, on the agenda, and I just wanted to say that, you know, like many projects, things constantly change and information's shared, and, and so there, there will be some things that, uh, I may have to amend a little bit in my background, but basically, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, you know, the, there's certain issues I want to make, I'll have to make clear after the applicant who wants you to do something for them, makes their presentation, and that's it.
Scott, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So you said that for the east intersection and the north and south side, you just, you push, I didn't know if you were pushing paperwork forward, because that's what we're moving forward with. I'm just wondering, what's the timeline?
The timeline is that, uh, we're gonna have the, we're trying for C dot approval for this fall.
Okay.
We have actually till the fall of twenty-six to have, to have that, uh, significant step done. But we're shooting for this fall. These access permits are good for a year, and if we don't get them, uh, get the project going in a year, you just have to reapply for the access permit.
Okay. And so right now, the, what, what's happening between now and fall, for over the next six months, I guess?
They have to get to hundred percent design for C dot, and, uh, they're working towards that.
Okay, thank you.
But that's just on the intersection itself, not the road all the way up?
No, in fact, I, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that that's, that's off my radar, because that's not something we can do until east intersection is done, and that'll be several years down the road, so why have a headache over something that, uh, we can't even think to address right now. Things could change in a year or two, who knows, so.
So Scott, we're giving, so to get to one hundred percent design, we're anticipating that that's gonna take roughly the next six months, so that then we can go to C dot for approval this fall?
That's correct. I forgot the terminology you used. It's like saying substantial completion, so they'll commit to, to us, and the biggest issue is finding money at that point to, uh, to fill that gap that we have.
Okay.
But we're moving forward as if, uh, you know, it's gonna work out.
Okay. No, no, I've just been looking for timelines, so I appreciate you asking, you letting us know. So right now, the ball's in our court with the one hundred percent design, to then get to C dot to do what C dot needs to do.
That's correct.
Um, if this was done earlier, would we be able to go to C dot earlier than the fall? And would that be a benefit?
I think you could, but the trouble is it does, it does take a certain amount of time, and from what I understand from the engineers and other people I've talked to, going out to bid, um, in the spring or summer is a very poor time. You, the contractor's already booked up. So you want to try to go to bid, um, more like, uh, fall or early winter, so that you've got people who are, plenty of people who are interested in work at that point. So the fall is a, is a good, uh, a good target.
So is that, so this, the C dot approval, once we get that, then we go to the bid for the work to be done? Okay, so we, do we know what?
We got money.
Yeah, if we have the, so we're looking for money, and then we need C dot approval, and we don't know how long that will take, so that could take some time. And then we would go to bid. So we're counting on the C dot thing approval being good to go in the fall, so that we can immediately turn around to go to bid. Does that sound right?
That's the way I understand it.
Okay.
Correct.
And what's the realistic, uh, aspects of funding? Have you looked into that at all? Especially now that we have the feds pulling back funding?
I don't have any updates on the feds', um, position. It hasn't changed from what I've heard so far. It's, everything's held in advance. The money's there, um, and I guess there's some litigation going back and forth with the POTUS, and so I don't have any to, I don't know anything more than they do.
Yeah.
Now, the, uh, other funds, I've been looking for other funds. I'd say the last week or two, I haven't spent a whole lot of time on that, because I've had other issues. But so far, I haven't had any glaring, um, um, possibilities, uh, for, uh, grant, um, for that money. I will continue to look and.
Yeah. Cause if we don't get a grant, we don't have the funds to pursue this. Is that pretty accurate?
I, it all depends. I, it just depends how much money you have in reserves and what you want to spend. There are some subdivisions that may, uh, contribute to it. I don't know.
Got it.
So, um, I think in the next few months, we'll have to push really hard on how we want to try to find funding for that.
Got it. Okay.
Is it possible for us to get something put together that says, okay, this is how much we have in reserves, this is how much a loan would cost, potential pay repayment on it, you know, that sort of thing? Is it possible to get that?
Well, you have to make a lot of assumptions on what, what you, what you term as a loan, because if, you know, we get a general obligation debt, that's a, a vote, and a revenue bond would be something that, uh, you'd actually have to be able to tie it to a revenue, so you'd have to maybe create a revenue. So, uh, and all of those things are kind of contentious. Yeah, I think that, uh, a plan like that needs to be put together at some point, uh, if we can't find any grant funds, and it's, uh, I think will be, um, Bayfield, like all towns, and especially small towns, uh, those actions to try to find funding are probably quite contentious, and so. But I think, yeah, we, that could be, that could be done.
What is the amount of the gap, the current funding that we don't have?
Let's see, we had one point eight plus.
Mm-hmm.
We need three point two, I believe. And, uh, I do know that there is certain area, you know, at least one place I noticed that there's supposed to be some contributions from subdivisions towards, towards this, but it's nothing significant. But there may be others that I haven't seen, because I'm.
Okay.
I dig through a lot of stuff that's, um, not well organized. I'm just, just, uh, finding it as I go.
No, thank you. I, I wasn't under the impression that we had that much of a shortfall to get this done. I thought it was just we didn't have plans at one hundred percent. So this is good information to have, because I don't recall.
I think, eventually, at the previous meetings, but, uh, it's like a lot of other information. It's just.
Yeah.
Some extraneous if you're thinking about different things, so, but, uh, we've, we've known that for a while, but, uh, I forgot the gal's name, but C dot told me that, put, it gave me the first indication that you're not close to having enough money. It's gonna be three point two.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think it's good that we're, we're pursuing this, since this has been an effort for some time. You know, the funding can always be dicey, right? I mean, at any time. So I think we need to keep pursuing it, and then when we get close enough, we dig hard to figure out what the funding's gonna be for that, and it'll either be a go or a no-go at that point, so. I appreciate you really getting on this, Scott.
Yeah.
It's been, it's been a, you know, kind of foggy thing for a while, so.
I hope that what I've reported and, and then some physical evidence in front of you shows, hey, something's getting done. So that's why I'm doing that.
And I have a different question, and maybe Jeremy, you can answer this, based, based on the fact that Scott mentioned Pine River Commons. Was there a state permit required for that detention pond?
Yeah, so any subdivision that's put in a town of Bayfield, if disturbance is more than an acre, they're required to have a state stormwater permit that's put in there. And there's still one in place at this time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So do you get a copy of that at the, at the time that it's completed, that says met all state requirements for that pond? Do you get something?
Yeah, that's one of the stipulations for entering into the subdivision improvement agreement that they have anyway, before construction can start. So we're assured that the state stormwater permit has been applied for and approved, um, once that goes in, and then they're required to do continuous monitoring throughout the project as well.
Okay.
So at any time, you can request any of that information, and they can show you all the inspection reports and things like that.
Okay.
So for any of the projects that are currently listed right now, Mustang Crossing saw this open stormwater permit that has been closed out, Pine River Commons does as well.
Okay, great, super. Thank you for that information.
Scott, thank you for your report.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for staying on top of that. Chief of Police.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. Um, on my, uh, monthly report, you see the Southwest Regional Training Board meeting. I am a member of that board, and what that allows me to do is have more insight for our out-of-town training I have to send officers to. And for up till now in twenty twenty-five, all of our out-of-town training has been reimbursed through the scholarships that this board gives. So every time, like, I send one to Denver, I send one to, uh, even Durango, some of the classes that cost, I apply for a scholarship through this board, and right now, we're a hundred percent reimbursement. So we're getting a lot of the funds back for all the training that we are doing. The ETSA board we met, it's our quarterly thing, it's for an, uh, emergency telephone system. The MOU at the SRO is at the Bayfield School Superintendent's Office right now, just waiting for his signature. The Task Force MOU has been signed and forwarded to them. Um, if you look at our calls, I did a breakdown, as requested, and again, twenty twenty-four's numbers were an anomaly because we were not allowed to get into the system at time to extract the numbers. But you can see all of our numbers for February twenty twenty-five through the Spillman system. Um, we were busy again last month, and we did a lot of training. We had a lot of in-service training that we had to complete that's mandated by post, and we had a lot of officers go to different trainings that we really need for what we're doing here. Desert snow, we have one of the main highways that goes from Denver to Albuquerque, or Denver to Phoenix, so we get a lot of traffic coming through here that a lot of the citizens don't know we get. And so one of our officers went to the schooling. He got specially trained in making sure that we are keeping an eye on our roadways for this trafficking. Two of our officers went to first-line supervisor school. It's one of those things I think that we really, really need as we build for the future. And the two officers that went was Officer Morland and Officer Gagos. Uh, they came back and kind of critiques me, but that's all right. But that's what we do. We just sit back there and talk, and, you know, we learn from each other. Um, then everybody had TASER training last month. Um, what I'm really happy with, if you go down and buy the recruitment, uh, Marie helped me with testing last week. We had eight people apply for one spot. Five showed up for the testing, and we made a conditional offer to the young lady. She did an outstanding interview and test. So we're working with her right now to get her into the, sign up for the academy, and get her all the other stuff she needs to have done, the background done. But she's agreed to the conditional offer, and hopefully we'll have her sitting with us June ninth.
Wow.
So.
Cool.
Where does she come from?
She's a former Bayfield High School graduate.
Woo-hoo.
Yep.
Very cool.
So Chief, as of June, once the academy and everything's done, you'll be, for the first time that I've been on this board, fully staffed?
Yes, correct.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Yahoo.
Any questions for the chief?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. Um, I did put a staff report together. Um, I saw that Chief had a graph for you guys, so I didn't provide one. Actually, only one, only one graph a meeting. Um, we've been having some technical difficulties over at the Public Workshop with some of our applications, Word, Excel, and things like that. So I think, um, DataSafe has it all worked out. Everything seems to be working this week. So anyway, I was lucky to get this report in front of you. I'm just gonna touch on a couple highlights. Uh, you know, we had forty-three locate tickets come in. That's pretty average for February, so not a whole lot of construction. In the water system, you see these two fire hydrants we need to repair. We're still waiting on parts, and those have been in my report for like almost six months now. So tomorrow, we're supposed to have the lower stem for one will get repaired, and then the six-foot fire, fire hydrant over here is on order as well. You'll also notice that I do have, um, a quote, well, actually, it's an invoice for meters that we ordered last October. So for the meter pits, we finally got those received, and that's a little bit further down in the agenda item. So it's been taken like twenty-four to twenty-six weeks for parts, which is kind of ridiculous, so we're trying to be pretty vigilant about keeping some stuff on the shelf and stock, just so we don't end up in a pickle and have to wait. Sewer system, one sixty B, uh, no more pumping costs. Uh, we have that, a pump available. Um, we're spending a little bit of overtime. The guys are going out on Saturday and Sunday, having to manually pump it down. But we should have the patrol panel April twenty-fifth. Um, it'll start operating on floats.
Do we get, um, reimbursed for the overtime from the insurance on that?
Yeah. We did turn it into SIRSa. Um, well, not the regular time, so all of the hours accrued during the work week, we were able to absorb. Um, so that wasn't necessarily a reimbursable cost, but the weekend callouts were. One of the other things in the sewer system, we did get a second bill in February. Um, we're running about eleven thousand dollars a month for sludge removal. So it is looking like that's a real number. Um, looking at like going up to a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars annually for sludge. The big thing we're finding out is when the switch was made, the bio solids charge wasn't denoted, um, in the hauling costs. So that's where a lot of that's coming from. You're looking at about seventy-five hundred dollars for bio solids charge from the landfill, where, um, waste management was a little bit less for their surcharge for the dumpsters, so. That's, we're gonna look into that a little bit more, but, um, that's a substantial increase in cost.
Jeremy, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So we, we signed a contract with the new removal company, which is why now this was not part of that discussion and why we have this additional cost.
Correct.
Would we want to consider going back to who we were using before? I mean, this is a substantial cost.
Um, we'd signed a five-year contract, so that would be something we'd need to look into and see what, if any penalties potentially.
I'm just curious, because is that, is the penalty gonna be worth the?
Yeah, it'd probably be something we need to look into a little bit closer.
Okay.
Because that was kind of a hidden cost when that was presented. Um, I believe that the numbers presented when we were looking at the new roll-off provider, uh, were for the roll-off and fuel surcharges. They didn't include any of the bio solid charges, so if we were to look at, um, getting out of the contract with, uh, waste management or a current provider right now, um, I'm not sure what any of those penalties would be, but when we did bid it, we would bid it more apples to apples with, um, the bio solids charge as well, so. So that's something you guys might want to think about if you'd like us to look into potentially moving on from the contract.
Are you aware that there's alternative resources for this? I mean, are there other companies that you would like to talk to that you know are responsible and capable of doing this?
Well, there's four roll-off companies that are local here in town right now.
Okay.
So there's Republic Services, Waste Management, you have Trash Panda, and there's also the Durango Trash Man as well does roll-offs. Not sure if all four would be interested, but it's something that we could look into.
So would it make sense to go ahead and shop them just to understand what the cost difference would be? And then dig into the penalties if we break that contract and maybe have Michael take a look at that?
In my opinion, I think if we were looking at exiting the contract, we might want to have the town attorney look and see if that's feasible and what those penalties may cost before we look at.
Yes.
Moving out of the agreement.
Gotcha.
It would be my recommendation. We can do whatever, whatever you guys think would be appropriate.
Well, I trust you to know what's best, but you know, I'm with Lori. I mean.
It's $100,000.
Yeah.
So I'm just like, and this is going to be for the next five years?
Yes, over five years.
Yeah.
That's, that's $100,000 a year over five years.
That's a half a million dollars.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I would say yes, you have to be careful with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Way more than a half a million because you got another 30,000 in there on top of that.
But we were already paying.
She just ballparked it. She just ballparked it.
No, it just seems like that's a lot of money. And you know, it's just, it's unfortunate that when we were looking at a new company, this wasn't, I mean, when we, I would have assumed that this would have been part of, you know, this is the services we were being provided. And now the services this new company is providing that, oh, we just don't do that? Like, it just seems like there was a.
Well, the fact that they didn't close.
Yeah, it wasn't apples to apples, but I mean.
We never, we never got the full report. We were just.
We thought it was apples to apples. Yeah.
And so, yeah, I think it's, yeah, worth looking into to see if we wanted to find someone else who can do this for not $132,000 annually.
Well, I'd like to just be able to weigh the cost differences, you know, so we can make a good decision moving forward.
The thing is with the biosolids charge for Republic, which is the landfill, bonded landfills where all this goes.
Yeah.
You may see that that may be the cost.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Exactly.
But we can definitely look into it and see if there's some exit clause in that agreement. I'd have Michael look at that for us.
So where are we finding the money to make up this shortfall?
It's just come out of reserves. We have reserves, but they'll be depleted pretty quickly if we continue on this course. Because we don't, our rates right now aren't designed to absorb this type of increase. And I don't think we want to increase our rates to absorb it, to be honest with you. Right now it would be a large increase.
I mean, if, if there was, if, if all of the vendors came in at the same, you know, cost, then we would have to look at alternatives. But this is not on the public at this point. This is on us to see what we can find as a solution to reduce these costs. But, you know, again, we just had a furnace put in, and my husband wanted to buy the furnace online because he's a great shopper and he knows what he's doing. But the furnace companies wouldn't let him do that because they want to build in extra revenue in their bids, right? And they wouldn't even break it down. Here's what the furnace costs, this, this, this. So maybe there's, this isn't a one-for-one, you know, this isn't just what bonded charges. So that's the kind of stuff that I'd really like to know, you know?
We can definitely research and bring you something back.
Yeah.
I just don't want to deplete reserves because we have a contract that didn't include this.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, just.
Storm drainage irrigation, we are looking into a lot of the stormwater management practices right now for current subdivisions. So that's, SGM is assisting us with some of that as well. What we're finding out with a couple of the projects that we have is the historical point of diversion where they want the water to go back to has been irrigation ditches throughout town. So it's kind of unique to Bayfield. The irrigators can't accept the water. They have to quantify it, yet the state's telling us to discharge there. So between Division Water Resources and CDPHE, we're trying to kind of figure out who we need to have in the room to maybe get some more stringent design standards for some of these subdivisions going forward. We're noting a lot of similarities in the complaints to two separate subdivisions designed by two separate engineers and two different detention ponds designed by two different engineers. So that's ongoing right now. It's not going to be a fast process, but it is something we're looking into to try and find a more permanent resolution rather than just meeting those state requirements. We can be more stringent. We can't just be less.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And I, that's kind of been a bone of contention for me, looking at our stormwater drainage report that we got in June and how, you know, below standard we are. And, and I'm like, boy, we got to shore this up. We got to quit kind of running to catch up, right? And so I really appreciate the effort that you're putting into this research.
And we're looking to shore up some of the infrastructure design standards for stormwater. It basically references the state right now.
Yeah.
So there's not a whole lot of language in there. So that's something that's on, on our, on our radar right now that we're looking at in 2025.
Excellent.
So Jeremy. Mustang Crossing, so that's on hold because they don't have a approved stormwater permit from the state?
They don't have final acceptance for any of the public improvements. Now, at this time, the stormwater detention pond wouldn't be a public improvement. That is not going to be taken over by the town, but they still don't have approval for the water sewer. They've both been inspected, which they meet town standards or the streets or sidewalks. So we're waiting on a final from SGM, that report, before any of those are accepted.
Okay.
So did they start that report in December?
Yep. And as of last Wednesday, it's coming. They should have all the data. So we did the whole stormwater system over there.
I mean, it's been a pretty mild winter. I can't imagine it, the snows impeding their progress?
I don't think so. From what I've seen, they work indoors. So.
Well, I mean, they were going out and measuring the ponds and stuff.
Yeah, so they have all the data. We're just waiting on that final, the final report, so.
Well, I don't, I don't think we, as a town, should approve that subdivision improvements until we know that this stormwater detention pond passes the state requirements. I mean, they've got so many citations. So, and I realize that this is also in a legal situation, is what I've heard.
There, well, it's, right now, it's a private property dispute. So the town's not involved in it. It's between the developer and the adjacent property owner at this time. But I'm not sure of exactly all the details on that.
I sure don't want to take on any more detention pond responsibilities. And, and I understand kind of that this has been handed over to the state. But if our only leverage at this point is approving them to go, go ahead and build while this pond is not meeting the standards, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, and I agree. So once we get that final report from SGM, that'll actually come to you guys for final acceptance.
Okay.
So that will not be administratively accepted for any of the subdivisions. All of those will come to you. You'll get the approval, and then you'll actually accept that infrastructure.
Great.
But nothing will move forward without your, your specific approval.
Excellent.
Thank you.
As far as for the town hall renovations here, we actually hosted, it's not in my report, a third-party inspection from Advanced Fire last Friday. They went through, inspected. At this time, we feel it's appropriate to move forward with the sprinkler corrections that you approved at the last meeting. We have Cooper Fire scheduled for next Monday, Tuesday. We'd like to move forward with that and then kind of see what comes with the fire suppression system at a later date. That way, we can keep moving. We do have carpet contractors scheduled, ceiling tiles, insulation. To keep pushing off the sprinkler repairs, is going to start pushing those guys back, and we're starting to lose months, not just weeks, coming into a busier construction season. So that's the direction we were hoping to go. I probably got some more stuff in here, but I've been jabbing for a while.
No, Jeremy, I have one more question. I'm sorry. I thoroughly was reading everyone's reports, apparently. So the cinnamon heights and the ditch company, you have a blurb in there. So what, what's happened that there's, like, the water was just going to the wrong place or there wasn't a permit? Like, what, what was missed or what, what happened?
There's two easements, one on the north end of the building development and one on the south end that actually crossed through the cinnamon height subdivision. The other easement is in Sunrise Estates, which are the townhomes over there on Star Crossing. Well, the ditch company wasn't informed that the project was being built. They came back to us. We've applied for a crossing permit at this time, and that's what I was talking to Andrew about earlier. We just went out and potholed the irrigation pipe. I got survey coming tomorrow. We're going to make them as-built, and then we're working on some corrections with some potential inflow that they may have with raising some vaults and things like that. So we were unaware that Los Pino's Ditch Company had not been notified through the process. And so we're working through some of that to resolve any of their concerns in regards to encroachment with their easement for delivering water.
Whose responsibility was it to notify them?
It would have been the towns, the towns, the owner and the developer, so for cinnamon heights. So when this started going through the previous community development director, which he did a really good job of notifying people, somehow Los Pino's Ditch Company wasn't in that notification for the review. So.
Thank you.
Yep. Any, any other questions?
Any other questions for Jeremy?
Nope. Who's up next?
Thank you, sir.
All right, good evening. Okay, I'd say the most important, well, one of the good news I have to share with you all. Last fall, I was working with some penalties from the IRS, a $15,000 penalty from our 2022 W-2s that were submitted. So I was working with social security and IRS and trying to get all this information. So just this past week, they finally sent us a document in mail saying that they are waiving that $15,000 penalty.
Woo-hoo. What, how did, how did that happen? I know it was pre-U, but what?
Yeah.
So that it doesn't happen again?
They were saying it was late, that our W-2s were late.
Okay.
And then we submitted corrections, and then those were late as well. So they were like doubling up on the penalties, when really they weren't late.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great work.
Thanks. The other, let's see, the 1095Bs, I got that out for staff last month. But the issue was trying to come up with the correct computer file to upload that to the IRS. We love that IRS. And so honestly, just today, it has been weeks of me and Kathy trying to work on this or trying to get it to the correct files, upload to the IRS, but it's uploaded and accepted and all good. Okay, everybody wants to hear about town manager interviews. We did interview, not me, but KRW did virtual interviews. We are bringing two candidates to the town of Bayfield. The interview dates are going to be April 10th and April 11th. The plan is to do a meet and greet for the community on April 10th. That is going to probably be from 10:30 to 7 o'clock, hopefully at the senior center. So community will all be invited. And we will probably have one set of interviews with the staff prior to that. And then on Friday, the 10th, you will have your board of trustee interview with the candidate. And then we would also like to have a community panel. So if any of you are interested in being on the panel, we probably want four or five people that either are involved with the town's development, businesses, maybe the fire chief. But if you are interested, please let me know. And depending on who can be in that interview on Friday, I'd love to.
Both candidates will be there?
Yes. So it's going to be a rotating.
I would like to get. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Say that again, Brenna? It's probably going to be in the morning. Yep, and so honest. So really, for the board and/or the community panel, it's probably going to be two hours total. So you're going to see one candidate, and then you'll see the next candidate. So really, they're not here for that long, but that is, that's the plan.
I would love to send out invites to the director of the library, to the Chamber of Commerce, to the school superintendent, all of our key stakeholders. I would like for them to come and meet, if they're interested, obviously. So Brenna, can you think of any key stakeholders, some business owners, maybe?
Well, we can probably get somebody from, we have a couple chiropractors in town, we have a couple banks in town.
Yeah.
Restaurant owners?
Yeah, Pine River shares.
Nonprofits?
Yeah.
So what? So I will, I'm going to try to finalize the graphic. We're going to post that on Facebook. I am out March 31st through the 5th. So I can send that graphic to the board. I think I already said, post it on Facebook. But you can share it with everybody else for the meet and greet. And I guess just let me know if you want me to send it to somebody else. I can do that. But the plan is I need to get this done before I leave.
Yes, okay.
Marie, if I could make a request, the town manager interviews with the board, can we have those on Friday? I'm not here on Thursday.
Those are going to be Friday morning.
Okay, sorry. I thought you said something would be before the meet and greet.
Probably the staff.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, thank you. I missed her. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I was just like, I really would like to be a part of this.
And then we will release the names either next week or the week after. We're just trying to make sure the people who applied keep their confidentiality as long as we can. And yeah, any other questions?
Thank you. Really comprehensive report.
Any other questions for Marie?
No, great job.
Thank you. Board discussion item and liquor renewal action item, bottom-shelf brewery, liquor license renewal?
I reached out to the Chief of Police and got no negative feedback on that. So their expiration date is coming up soon. So we got the business owner in here, got everything ready to go for the state, just waiting on your guys' approval now so I can sign it.
Does the board have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the bottom-shelf brewery Brew Pub liquor license renewal.
I'll second. Reece, you're mad.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any public input? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Cesaro.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland. Trustee McLaurin.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. Financial action agenda, February 2025.
We got 4B.
Oops, I missed it. Lodger's tax and election calendar. My bad.
So this was a request by Trustee Katzos that we start looking at the election calendar and get that rolling and looking at lodger's tax. So I did put the calendar in the packet. We would need a formal action sent to the county clerk to get on the coordinated election, which is a mail ballot election in July, I believe it was. And that would come in the form of a resolution. The thing about that is we really need to do a lot of research if that's going to be the case because we need to have a great estimate of what the revenue is going to be for Tabor and rules like that. And then where it's going to be broken down to as far as the funds. And I would, of course, defer to Town Attorney Goldman on a lot of that.
Well, I did a little research, and there is already a lodger's tax being taken from our VRBOs by La Plata County. It's 2%, and the lodger's tax is a pass-through. So the tourists come, they stay at a VRBO, they pay this tax, and then La Plata County collects our 2%. So if we had our own lodger's tax, if we passed this, and whether we did it at the 2% or we did a evaluation and said, you know, maybe we're going to charge 3% because the town of, or the city of Durango, their lodger's tax is 5.25%. And their lodger's tax goes to tourism and, yes, childcare, and then workforce housing. And then also, it goes to the board for them to then make decisions about a specific amount or percent that they then. for them to then make decisions about a specific amount or percent that they then divvy out as they see fit. So instead of giving this money, which with seven active VRBOs, it's roughly ten thousand dollars a year. We have a new VRBO that was just permitted, so that would make it eight. So it would be roughly at two percent, it would be roughly twelve thousand dollars a year that we could, you know, set to go to Parks and Rec or, you know, something that we value that is good for Bayfield and not give it to La Plata County. Now, part of that is this childcare initiative and affordable housing. But I talked to Commissioner Nyberg, or not Nyberg, but Salca. And he, he actually said that Bayfield is a top priority for the Economic Alliance Affordable Housing and the Childcare Initiative. They see Bayfield as the highest need. So the money that they are collecting that you're gonna hear about when Sarah comes to talk to us, Sarah Togur from the Economic Alliance, when they talk about this funding, it's, they're directing it to Bayfield as a top priority. So when we remove this two percent from La Plata, it doesn't matter. We're still getting priority care and initiative of funding to support childcare initiative and continue to support workforce housing. So it just, it seems to me that this is a wise thing to do. Why should our town residents give the money to La Plata County for them to determine how they're gonna spend it? Why don't we bring it back home and utilize it for our community?
Will they give it back? What's that?
Do they give it back?
No, once we set, if we pass a lodger's tax, they no longer take lodger's tax. It becomes ours.
So we discussed this, and I remember four percent, Brenna, Alexis, Tom, remind, help me out. So, and we had it all, we had it all, and we can revisit what we were putting things towards. But this is something that we were considering. And then I think we stopped because we did the sales tax instead of the lodger's tax. But we looked, we have looked into this and we were all in agreement that it was something we wanted to do.
Yeah.
And now knowing that these folks are getting taxed anyway.
Right.
And it's not going to Bayfield.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So maybe we can find, I don't know if it's in Katie's old documentation somewhere. I know I don't have this anymore, but what did we say that? I mean, it was all, she had it all written out. Like, and it was almost like it could go in like a booklet or something for a vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be great. And I think, you know, being specific about slating this money so the public knows how we're gonna spend this money towards our community.
It has to be in the, whatever we put forth on the.
On the ballot.
On the ballot.
Correct, yep.
Thought we were talking about.
Let me ask. Can I add a point too?
Please.
Go ahead.
So I know that Durango, they have a lot of hotels and the hotels have lots of money. They're, they're large organizations that got people that lobbied for them to not have tax increases and stuff like that. And I think if we get our lodger's tax in before we have any kind of a hotel or we have any kind of lodging to speak of, I mean, we have a little bit right now, but nothing to write home about. But if we get it in the beginning and before anything like that happens, before we get a potential hotel, then we're gonna have an easier time getting the lodger's tax in place versus what can happen to us after the fact, after we already have a hotel and they lobby against it. And then it'd be harder to get that tax to pass.
Yeah.
I just feel like it's already being collected.
Yeah, it is.
And we're just not getting it.
Exactly.
To me, this, I mean, even if we did two percent, this is a no brainer, cause it's already happening. La Plata County's taking money that could be going to the town.
Exactly.
So.
Yep.
And if you do five percent, they're going for five.
In Durango. Yeah.
Well, I think it's something that we could put towards a, like a rec center.
Yeah.
Because that's a need that we, we definitely gotta have. Well, it's a need that we do have because the gym we're borrowing now is literally falling down. And we're paying rent and we're maintaining it and it just doesn't make any sense. So having that money going towards a rec center would be probably the best use of those funds at this point.
What do you guys think of increasing it a little bit?
I think we should.
I think, I think the county's gonna try to get higher, aren't they also trying to get more?
They, they are gonna do, yeah, they're gonna do five point two five.
So, you know, we can do less and then, then the people who also know are gonna not feel a bad about it switching over or then they increase because they increase, they're trying to get so much higher.
Well, and they just collect it and then they give it to us. I mean, it, it's not coming out of their pocket, it's coming out of their renters' pocket. So, yeah.
Yeah, but it still has to place into whether or not they can rent it out or not.
Oh, sure.
I think, I, it's still, you know, I think we should raise it, but not as high as Durango or La Plata County. Just so that they're still competitive.
Well, and I will tell you that I, I'm not deterred. Our family stays at VRBOs all the time and I, I never look at the tax. It's just like a given, you know, it's like all the hotel taxes and, so I never even look at that. And I don't think most tourists do. They're just kinda like, here's the cost of the VRBO and if they're gonna stay.
Yes, they do look at the cost. If he throw one first, then they're more expensive.
Right.
Especially if they're budget friendly. So that, that was my whole point is that, you know, we're a little further away from amenities out there. I mean, I see it was pretty close, but all the rest of the amenities are a little bit of a drive. And I think if you price it too high, you're pricing out of that market a little bit. You, you'll affect the pocketbooks of the people that are actually trying to do it right now. And I, and I, I like to be in keeping, we do this on, on pretty much everything that we have along the way. Is we look, look at the prices of the areas around us and we try to be a little more competitive. A little less expensive to make our community more competitive for us.
Yeah. Plus I.
I, I'm not saying leave it to you.
Yeah.
I'm not saying go high.
Right, no, I hear you. Plus, I also think that people that want to stay in Bayfield, they're totally doing it for convenience. You know, they wanna be, their families are here typically, so they wanna be here.
So I had a question, I was looking at the schedule of the election calendar and the next due date, like I saw the purple highlights, but April fourth, is there some, so do we not have to, do we have to do something by July twenty-fifth or by April fourth?
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. I don't, last day to submit a draft to the secretary of state of twenty twenty-five proposed initiative to be heard by the title board? If the initiatives to be voted on in November? And then the July highlight, if political subdivision has taken formal action to participate in coordinated election, it must notify the county clerk in writing. So do we have to do something with the title board with the secretary of state? Or do we just have to do something with notifying the county clerk?
We would notify the county clerk and we would bring that before you in a resolution form first.
Okay.
We'd get you guys to motion and approve.
Okay, I was just, since our next meeting is like, what, April second? I was like, do we need to get something on the next meeting?
April Fool's Day.
Oh, yeah. Okay, okay. Thank you. So what more do we need to do than this guy?
I, I wanna move forward with it.
Yeah, I do too.
One thing.
Probably just the number. I'd say anywhere from three point five to four. I think that would still, we'd still be competitive and not trying to price anybody out.
Yep.
Well, when we do have designate what we're putting the money towards.
Right. And, you know, I'm okay with like what you were saying towards a rec center, you know? Cause that gym, like you said, it is kinda falling down around us.
Could we look at the park, the park committee's plan that they put forth and see what their recommendations were?
I think that would be great. I mean, we haven't heard from Mary in a while, Mary Benson. She's kind of the spearhead for the park committee. And I know that they were hoping to bring forth a presentation for tax, for the one percent tax. But we could use both of them to contribute, you know what I mean? So I think because the park committee has done so much work and the feedback has been, why are you asking me again? Why are you running another survey again? I think we need to hit the ground running as far as pursuing that. And it'll either pass or it won't, but I know that the community's been thoroughly educated on it. And those who don't know, I'm not sure about those, but boy, we've been out there, they've been out there, really hitting the ground. So I think we just need to hear from Mary to figure out where she is in her process and if you guys are pursuing the tax. Do you wanna go ahead and address it, Brian?
Well, it could be an update anyway. Mary Benson, Brian Blight, six twenty-seven Louisiana Drive. Mary Benson is the stats person in charge of the parks committee. And she is going to be meeting with town manager at some point here in the near future, giving the town manager, interim town manager, an update of where the committee's at and what really the citizens of Bayfield want. That's the whole purpose of the committee was, we had no input whatsoever. It was all about what the citizens wanted and what their priorities were. The rec center was number two behind the swimming pool. So those are the first two items. So that shifted a little bit of the emphasis that the committee was to go after on the number three thing that you wanted the committee to provide for you. And that was some sort of cost estimates of what that might actually be. Obviously, a pool and a rec center is more than a couple of pickleball courts or a dog park. So that's gonna be the tricky part, but that's what, that's what the citizens want. So we shifted gears and that's what we're going after, is what the people want. You know, damn be the cost, because we can't get caught up in that as a committee. We can only get caught up in what people really want and what they would support. So that's kinda where we're at now. I think on your question of lodger's tax, be careful of how you, Dustin, whoever, Michael, draft that ballot of where that money's gonna go. You have to be very specific. The pool and the rec center were not part of the original master park plan.
Right.
So when we went for this before, it was to identify those items and those amenities that were in the master park plan at that time. Well, we've shifted on that. We now have a whole new set of guidelines that the citizens want that are not the original guidelines from the design teams that put together that for the town back in twenty eighteen. We've been working on this a long time, kinda like stormwater and, you know, the other things. But anyway, we're working on, Mary Benson is kind of the, the point person now on the parks committee. I think that's a good thing, she's very detail oriented, she's committed, she's in, she's in the hunt. So that's a good person to have, is somebody who's kind of that, that personality, who really wants to see it through. So I think the town manager in the next few weeks will have an update for you. I have furnished most of the data to Mary through Pagosa Springs, all the things they've done. And they're currently building a new rec center as we speak. So they're going from ground zero with all new numbers and all of that, and she has that. She has Oral Valley, Arizona, as of last week, and all of their new things that they're doing, itemized to the cost. So we're, we're up to date and then we'll push that through the manager and then that manager will come to you. And we're hoping for your support in moving all this forward. And then it becomes like everything else, how do we fund it?
Very good.
Thank you.
So I guess after, Scott, after you talk with Mary and stuff, maybe we can figure out where we wanna go with this, with the lodger's tax as far as funding that or funding the park plan or the, or a rec center, whichever way we decide we wanna go from there?
I think when you talk about the lodger's tax and you can bring all the other possibilities up at that time and debate it. So it'll be up to, I think Dustin to get a workshop together or something to talk about it.
Great.
So then you could be prepared to pass what resolution for direction.
Okay. Does the board have any other comments or questions?
No. Thank you.
Moving on to the February twenty twenty-five financial statements.
Good evening. So the report that I provided in your packet this evening was an overview of the expenditures and revenues received in the month of February. As I had told you in January, those weren't quite accurate because journal entries hadn't been made. But in preparation for the audit next month, I have made the journal entries that, for expenses that were made in twenty twenty-five that should have been in twenty twenty-four. I've also made the journal entries for the revenues that we generally, generally receive in the first quarter of the year that were actually for the last quarter of the previous year. So those journal entries are, are mostly all made. There will be more once the audit is complete. The general fund, there was seventy thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-one cents in capital improvement expenditures in February. These expenditures included license plates for the two new patrol vehicles, radar systems, body worn and in-car cameras, and the down payment on the skateboard ramp improvements. In the general fund, you'll notice that the building maintenance line item is over budget. That's due to all the expenses that we are paying for the town hall repairs caused by the flood. We will be reimbursed for those, for those expenses. But we will show them as an expense and the money will come back in as a revenue. So at some point, we probably will do a budget amendment to, to make that balance. The, the same thing is happening in the sewer fund. Jeremy's building maintenance line item is high and that's due to the costs associated with the repairs to the lift station that was, that was damaged. And those costs will be reimbursed through insurance as well. At this time, all funds are operating as anticipated with revenues over expenditures, with the exception of the garbage fund and the housing fund. The garbage fund always runs, that fund is, we budget that fund to run at the bare minimum. And so right now, it's, it's expenditures over revenue, but it's a month behind in the collection of utility payments, so that will wash. And the housing fund is waiting on a grant reimbursement. And then that will wash as well. The total interest earned in the month of February on our collar trust accounts was thirty-one thousand, four sixty-four, sixty-eight. We're seeing a small decline in our, in our interest received, but not astronomical at this time, just a bare minimum decrease. The sales tax continues to be strong. It's still, it's still moving forward and staying on the upward trend. And I, as you know, I've been working on grant reimbursements for the Pine River Commons, for the DOLA grant. We have finally succeeded in, our first reimbursement request has been accepted and approved. And I've received notification that the funds have been distributed. That usually takes four or five days. It was late last week when I was notified. So I'm hoping that probably by tomorrow, Thursday morning, we should have those funds that we can pass on to Mr. Albert at Pine River Commons. And that's all I've got. Questions? Yes, Laura?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just had a question, so are there, under your revenues in here?
Uh huh.
And what's the miscellaneous revenue?
And what's the miscellaneous revenue?
Um, are you looking in the general fund?
The general fund, the ninety-one thousand, is that what you're asking about?
Yes.
That's what I was going to ask about.
Okay. So that, that, that would be where we're getting reimbursements from the insurance company for the expenses that we've made. Those, those reimbursements have to go into a revenue account. We cannot replenish the expense account. So, um, in the general fund, of course, there's not a line item for town hall flood, so those revenues will go into the miscellaneous revenue.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope. Mr. Mayor, I, um, move to, um, approve the, um, February 2025 financial statements and sales tax. Can I combine those? Okay.
Usually the motion is, you're accepting the financial...
Oh, so I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, we should accept. Okay. Mr. Mayor, we should accept the February 2025 financial statements and sales tax.
I'll second thought.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro?
Yes.
Trustee Hartz?
Yes.
Trustee Katsos?
Yes.
Trustee Marlin?
Yes.
Trustee McLaren?
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yes. Next up is the action item agenda, Pine River Commons plant investment fees.
My address is twenty-two fifty-two County Road two fifty in Durango. Uh, I am the, uh, manager of Bayfield Haga LLC. Uh, Bayfield Haga is, uh, a part of the, uh, five oh one C three nonprofit, um, Eschela Samateo. And, uh, um, I, I have a very limited hearing, so, uh, I, I may, I may have trouble hearing, uh, comments or questions, so my wife said I could hear about that far, so my, my wife is, uh, going to give you some, some help on that anyway. But, uh, a- anyway, just to, uh, you probably know this, but, uh, our, the objective of the, uh, Pine River Commons is to build high-quality, deed-restricted, affordable workforce housing at, uh, at affordable sale prices. Um, and as far, as far as our quality, um, I believe, uh, Dan, the, uh, building inspector would, uh, confirm what I, what I'm saying on that. And, um, the, uh, uh, the fir- the first building we completed in, uh, November, uh, we sold those units for, uh, three hundred and seventy thousand. And, um, an equivalent, uh, uh, townhouse in, uh, uh, Three Springs would sell for about six hundred and fifty, maybe, maybe even more than that. Uh, and, uh, a, a working person, uh, can, uh, buy one of these units even, even with the high interest rates, but with, with the, uh, help of, uh, Home's Fund for, uh, for down payment. And, uh, some of the buyers are getting payments, uh, principal and interest payments in a range of, uh, two thousand, two hundred, uh, a month. And, uh, just to co- to compare that with, uh, apartment rentals, the, um, uh, Rocket Apartments in, uh, Durango, an equivalent, an equivalent apartment in the, in the Rocket Apartments rents for about three thousand a month. So it's, it's, it's really a good deal for, for people and, uh, with, with the big, uh, big help from Home's Fund. But a- anyway, uh, my, my main work on this project is to keep, uh, keep the cost down as far as we can and still keep, still keep our quality up. And, um, the reason I'm here, here tonight is to, uh, ask your help on a couple, uh, Town of Bayfield items. Uh, okay, now, number one is, uh, we're asking that, uh, you would defer the, uh, water and sewer investment fee permits. Those are normally paid at, uh, um, building permit. Uh, if, if you could defer those to, uh, operating permit, there, this would be a, a substantial savings for us on the, uh, bank interest we pay. Uh, you know, bank interest is running about eight percent or so. It's a, it's, it's a lot. Uh, and, uh, the other, the other item is, um, to re- to reluse, release, uh, the, uh, water and sewer, uh, line of credit bond from, uh, Bank of Colorado. Um, and this is, uh, so that, uh, we, we don't have to pay another fee to the bank on this. And, um, the, um, interim town manager has, uh, submitted a recommendation, uh, that, uh, the, uh, in, in, in opposed to this, that these should, should not be approved. But, uh, I just wanted you folks to, uh, hear our side of it. Okay, uh, so, uh, in order to start out, I, I'm, you've probably seen, seen his summary on this, and I'm just going to read a few, a few items out of that. Uh, one of them said, uh, but it also, he's, he's talking about the, uh, town regulations, but, but it also indicates deferral payment agreement could be created. I believe this would require, uh, Board of Trustees approval. So that's why, that's what I'm asking you for. I, I'm asking, would, would you approve this, uh, delayed, uh, payment of, of the, um, of the fee? And, uh, goes on to say, in May of twenty-four, it appears that the staff approved a deferred, a deferment to the first group of lots. Uh, that's, uh, later been paid. Okay, so, uh, um, allow, allowing this, uh, deferral will, uh, reduce our, um, interest costs that we gotta, that we gotta pay to the bank. And, uh, this, this would, uh, this would be for each, uh, uh, each building here we, we, uh, uh, we build. And, uh, I don't, I don't see that the town has a security problem on this because, uh, again, we couldn't, we couldn't get a occupancy permit unless we paid them. We're just, we're, we're just saying, give us a few months on that so we don't have to pay that eight percent bank interest. Okay, so, uh, uh, just, uh, um, ask you to approve this to, uh, help us keep our costs down. Okay, going on to our, uh, our, our second item, uh, we have a, uh, um, as everybody has to have, a, a, um, line of credit bond. Ours happens to be with the, uh, with, with the Bank of Colorado. This is to, uh, secure the, uh, construction inspection and acceptance of, of the water and sewer systems in, in phase one of the project. Okay, and, uh, re- reading from, uh, the town manager's report, it said, "The town staff asked town attorney whether we could allow a partial release of the letter of credit." Okay, we were, we heard asking for a partial release. The water and sewer lines are done. They, they were completed, uh, last summer inspected, and as far as we know, they're accepted. We don't know anybody that didn't, didn't accept them. So, anyway, let, let me, um, uh, review a little bit what's involved in this, uh, it's called an irrevocable letter of credit. Okay, this was put together by Bank of Colorado, and what they did is, uh, they wanted to see our development agreement, agreement, to see that the, uh, letter of credit, uh, corresponds with, with the, uh, um, development agreement. Okay, let, let me read, and this is very important, what this letter of credit is for. The letter of credit is to ensure a se- successful completion by borrowing and acceptance by beneficiary of the sanitary sewer and water line improvements in Pine River Commons Phase One. That, that one thing, uh, sanitary sewer and water, this was completed, uh, early last year and inspected and accepted. Okay, so, uh, just so you understand what it is. So, uh, anyway, uh, I, uh, asked that, uh, you would, uh, release this so that the project doesn't have to pay additional, uh, charges to Bank of Colorado. Uh, and, you, you know, what, what that means is, uh, as, as I, as I explained, we're, we're a nonprofit. Uh, there's not, this is not something we take out of profit when we have extra expenses or we can save a little money. That goes right to the buyers. Okay, so, thank, thank you for, uh, listening to this, and if you've got any questions or comments, I'll do my best to answer them.
I, I have a question for you, Charlie. Um, letters of credit are usually, uh, are usually issued annually. Are you, um, is your letter of credit up for renewal? Is that why you're asking for the release?
No, I, I'm, I'm asking for it because the work has been completed and the, uh, w- letter of credit is supposed to be released by the town upon completion of the work. That's part of the development agreement.
Okay, it's not a partial release of the letter of credit, it's a full release? I'm just trying to understand.
Full one hundred percent. The amount of the, uh, uh, the, the amount of the letter of credit is four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And it's a full release you're asking for?
Full, full release because it's completed. We're, we're not asking because we put in a little pipe. No, we, we, we finished it.
Gotcha. I was just trying to understand.
Okay, yeah.
How is stormwater addressed?
A stormwater, um, have you been out there and seen our pond?
No.
Well, you should come look at it. It's huge. It's a big pond, holds a lot of water. Okay, and how that was, uh, uh, put together was, it was designed by, um, our engineering company, and it was reviewed by the, uh, Town of Bayfield and by the Town of Bayfield's, uh, engineering consultants and by everybody else who reviews stormwater. It was reviewed and approved, and when it was all reviewed and approved while we built a stormwater pond.
So I, I'm feeling kind of confused. Do we have, and is it in our packet or is it in somewhere where if Charlie's saying that the work has been completed and that's what this letter of credit is and that we stated somewhere that once the work was completed, we would release this four hundred thousand plus amount? So I'm not, I'm just not certain, uh, or why are we holding on to this if we have it in writing somewhere that we say that we would release this?
Well, my understanding, my understanding, and, and it's not in here. So Scott, did you review their, um, subdivision improvement agreement?
They have, I do have that. I could go through it, not right now.
Um, my understanding also is in our subdivision development agreements, we hang on to letters of credit for two years after a project is completed to ensure that if any of the systems they've installed fail, we have a resource that is not put on the onus of the town to find the money to fix, i.e. Dove Ranch. They let Dove Ranch's letter of credit go because the developers said, you know, no more, I can't, I can't pay anymore, I can't do anymore. And if the town had not released that letter of credit, we would still have the funds to apply to the stormwater drainage issue that's about one point two million at this point for us to fix. So what I'm wondering is if in his subdivision develop- a development agreement, if there is a requirement in that agreement that stipulates that the town is required to hang on to that letter of credit?
All right, I'll start with first question. And, uh, there's three letters of credits. One is for landscaping, one is for the pavement, uh, streets, that kind of thing, and then one is for the water and sewer. The, um, it was our belief, and this is one of those things I, I set up, things change a little bit from what I've learned over the last week, but what we've, the attorney position was, uh, if there's still things remaining out there to be done, uh, that none of those should be released. Um, I've, Jeremy and I... Talk, Jeremy's here? Yeah. And, um, we believe that, uh, the water and sewer has been done, um, and therefore, um, we've queried the attorneys to find out, um, what's the risk of releasing that one letter of credit. It's not a partial release of that letter, but a partial release of the three credits, right? Okay. Um, I would say, I just want to double check, the, um, the, do we need to have the engineers do anything formal on this, uh, approval that it's all done? Or just what I, what I've done? Okay, that's fine.
The inspections all come through public works, so we're required to do a full camera inspection of the sanitary sewer system, and then we have to do a hydrostatic pressure test and disinfection of the water system. And all of that had to be done prior to, uh, release of a certificate of occupancy for any of the cells of those homes. We can't, um, turn on the water until we get passing back, two samples back for public safety. So those two actions have been completed. Um, there's still some road improvements, landscaping and things like that, but, um, those are two separate letters of credit.
And I've not really had much time to, to, to double check with, uh, Michael on where we're at with that, um, with that concept of releasing that one. We've done, we've talked, I've got an email, he sent an email, we, I really haven't got my mind set on it, maybe he can add to it. I, I will say, and then moving on to your question, I don't know.
Okay.
I've not seen that provision of holding on to it. Makes total sense to me. I'd have to read the subdivision improvement agreement with that in mind, I think, to see if I can capture that. Although Michael, again, may know this because he may have been involved with this one or an earlier one. I'm, I'm not aware, but that's important. Because that's one of the, I mean, that your code is very specific about prohibitions of, of not just letters of credit, but this, this other issue with, uh, that they're, they're requesting and, um, because of the risks that the town takes. And so that's why it's built into your subdivision improvement agreements, your annexation agreements. And, um, so, I don't have the answer for the subdivision.
Yeah, well, Trustee Katsos, your, your concern is valid and, uh, the town has been burned in the past. And so without the, uh, infrastructure improvements being fully completed, uh, I would advise and be reluctant to release any letters of cred- I would advise and then be reluctant to release any letters of credit while there are improvements that still need to be made. Because you lose the leverage and you lose your ability to make the corrections should the developer, for whatever reason, and we've seen it in the past, skate or, uh, file for bankruptcy or what have you. Not that that's going to happen in this case. I don't expect that to happen in Mr. Albert's case, but, uh, the town's been burned in the past and we've been left holding the bag and we don't have the ability to pay.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to address your comment and also Attorney Goldman there. Okay, this is, uh, it's, uh, for successful completion and acceptance. Yeah, this wasn't intended for a, uh, long-term guarantee, like two or five years or something. Uh, and I, and I don't think that, uh, it's, it's reasonable to hold this much, this $475,000 until we plant the last bush out there and it gets accepted. Can you explain that?
Yeah, understood what, what you're saying. I'd like to look at, I haven't had a chance to look at the subdivision improvement agreement to see if there is a specific clause about holding the, um, the LOC for any period of time beyond the acceptance date. There are warranty periods and so forth that, uh, generally we have. And generally, under a warranty period, that is what the letter of credit would be used for if there was some sort of, uh, defect.
Correct.
Or breach of that warranty.
No, in my opinion, you're mixing up two things there.
Understood.
Well, I, for example, on the, uh, when, when we built the Schroeder ditch, uh, we, we had a bond for completion and then we had another agreement for, uh, for long-term. Okay, the, the, uh, the, the bond for construction was completed, but we're, we're still on the line for, uh, if that would fail this year, it's, I think it's two or three years, uh, that that's, we have, we have a guarantee on it. But, uh, the, uh, normal, uh, irrevocable line of credit is for construction only.
Well, we have, we have two requests.
Yes.
We have waiving, well, not waiving, but postponing tap fee payments.
Yes.
And then we also have the release of the credit. So I deeply appreciate the project that you're doing for our community. Um, I think that it's very important, it's very needed. Um, and I believe we worked with you to get a grant for this so we could offset costs. It is true that there are costs of doing business. And I understand that you're trying to avoid paying interest on money that you're going to have to borrow from the bank to, to execute on what needs to be done, the tap fees. So for me, I feel that, that this was an understood agreement when you agreed to do this development. Um, and to modify that agreement at this time, we're putting the town at risk. I believe that you're going to see this thing through and, you know, barring no outside circumstances like the market crashing like it did in 2007 and eight, things that are out of your control, that you're going to do your due diligence and it's going to be a wonderful project. But I'm not comfortable putting the town at risk. We are dealing with several projects right now where that is a problem. And we've got a very hefty stormwater, um, debt that we're going to have to deal with because things weren't done right or people, developers walked away from them. I don't want to see that happen anymore in the future. So in regards to the tap fees, I'm not comfortable with, um, postponing that. The line of credit, I need to know what's in your original subdivision improvement agreement. Um, I, I feel like this is kind of piecemealed for me, so I need clarity around that.
Okay.
And, uh, just to help out the board at this time, I'm looking at the subdivision improvement agreement, specifically at subsection Roman numeral nine, subsection C concerning release of collateral. And it states that the collateral will remain on deposit with the town until the town provides developer with probationary acceptance of the last scheduled improvement, phase depicted on Exhibit B. At such time, the town will release the collateral to developer, except that the town may retain 10% of the total cost to construct the improvements at, as listed in Exhibit B until the end of all warranty periods and final acceptance. So there is that two-phase approach. There is the probationary acceptance that I believe Jeremy had referenced this past summer. There's this warranty period and then that's where the final acceptance comes in. And the, the board can release the line of credit and perhaps should release this line of credit, except retain 10% of the total cost for the period until the final acceptance. And again, there are three lines of credit. The one that Mr. Albert's addressing is the highest line of credit concerning the water and the sewer.
Well, I'd like to follow the letter of that agreement.
I, I agree.
I would like to follow the letter of that agreement.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't know why we would hold on to that because that's not what we agreed to. But, uh, except for the 10%.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So if, if Michael, that is your, um, advice on that?
Michael, do you need more time to review or?
You know, that, that may be best. And, uh, because, uh, I've been handed Mr. Albert's copy and I'm not sure that I'm looking at the final copy. I'm just, I'm trying to be efficient for Mr. Albert's purposes.
Yes.
But, um, it might be best to table this till the next meeting and I will review it specifically and I'll give you very specific direction with regards to this release.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I would, if, if that's amenable to everyone, I, I, it, it sounds like the line of credit, we'll go back to you, but I would really like our town attorney to ensure that there's not, you know, somewhere down page 200 that we're missing something. Again.
And again, my, my intention is just to protect the town. So if that, um, subdivision agreement, um, allows us a percentage to keep for our protection, I'm good with that. So if you are okay with that, Mr. Albert, we can table this and circle back with you.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Okay, I, I really appreciate it and I appreciate what you're doing.
So is that the next meeting, the decision will be made?
Yeah, I, I think that that's the direction that I'm, I'm suggesting to the board, uh, that this be tabled for a couple of weeks. I'll look at the subdivision improvement agreement, make sure that I am looking at the final copy. I will, uh, send a memo to the board with regards to direction on the, on the line of credit.
Okay, so when is the next meeting then?
April 1st. April 1st.
And then if I may ask?
Are, are you talking about both items or only the line of credit?
That's what I wanted to ask staff on that. So I, because I'm looking at some of the items that our town, interim town manager provided to us and there's comments in here about if we did deferred payment, there's 12% interest that is paid, that, that starts at the date of execution of deferred payment. So I'm kind of curious. I, I think I might be misunderstanding because it sounds like you don't want to be making additional
Interest payments.
Interest payments, but it's, the, the pages I'm looking at here show that there would be interest payments for the deferment. So I think I want to make sure that we, I, we might be charging you more interest than the bank on these. So that's where I'm like, are we?
If you charge 12% interest, I'd be better off.
Yeah, and so I, I just don't want to have, if we don't, I don't want to defer tap fees for you to pay more based on what I'm reading in my packet tonight. So if you're at 8% and we're saying 12%, I'm concerned that you don't want us to defer based on the information I'm looking at.
I also want to add that, uh, one of the things I learned from Charlie and Brad as I looked at the documentation is that the, um, these tap fees are completely reimbursable through the grant. And in fact, this first payment we just, they just received, um, covered, um, tap fees that were paid, so.
So if the tap, if they pay the tap fees, then they reimburse?
Then they get reimbursed.
At a certain percentage.
Yeah, it just depends on how long it takes from the tap fee to then submitting and then the grant, so.
And it was long, this first one, because this, the DOLA didn't know how to handle this because it's a really unusual arrangement. But, and now that we've got this arranged, I think Kathy is quite understands it and it's zip, zip, I think it's going to go quickly once we get submission, submission of expenditures from the developer. Then we turn around and send it to the state and the state sends us back some money. So at least, uh, I, that's one area that I, I think people aren't understanding that the money is actually fully reimbursable. It's not like you have to wait until, you know, long periods of time.
Okay.
This other question, I don't know, the document, the document I put in there was what was the staff had or put together last year. I don't know much about it.
But it sounds like we could, there wouldn't be additional costs.
I think, I think we should table it.
Yeah.
And then we should get a report back from Michael and a report back from Scott.
Okay.
When we understand the cost at the end of the day.
Nope, I just wanted to try to answer the question of, well, there's two items and I think that if we have more time to look into this, we can, we're actually, you're not going to want to defer. I think that that might not be what you want. So if, if it's okay giving us that time, then we can give you a clear answer because it sounds like everything you want to avoid or what you want, I think it's going to happen, but we just need two weeks to look into it. If, if that's okay. Okay.
Well, I, uh, I appreciate your consideration of this item and, uh, I, I especially, uh, appreciate all the hard work of Kathy on the grad application. That was a lot of work to go through that. She really is got some, uh, come up with some success on it, so I appreciate that.
Well, and I'm hearing about great success with your development as far as sales, so that's wonderful.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, do you want to do a motion to table the matter for two weeks?
Mayor Protem Hartz, I will make a motion to table the question of the Pine River Commons plant investment fees and for, until our next, um, regularly scheduled Board of Trustees' meeting.
I'll second.
Can you also include the release of?
Oh, and including, sorry, and including the release of the?
Line of credit.
Line of cred, I was like LOC, a line of credit.
And I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Just, excuse me, Trusty Nyberg?
Yes.
Trusty Zazaro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hartz?
Yes.
Uh, Trusty Katsos?
Yes.
Trusty Morland?
Can we change the verbiage to say letter of credit?
Yeah, letter, letter's fine.
Thank you. And my, yes, then.
Okay, and Trusty McLaren?
Yes.
All right, someone let, tell Tom he can come back.
Next up is the McKinstry Energy Performance Contract.
Oh, there we go.
Hello, can you all hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks for having us today, um, back with Mrs. Erin and Ashley from McKinstry. We presented to you all last month on an overview of our project and wanted to provide some answers to some of your questions. Those are listed on pages 90 to 96 of your board packet, but we wanted to give you a little bit more detail on some of those questions and then review the two different reformas with news to give examples of what that project cash flow could look like. And so the first question is, is the DOLA money safe from executive orders and from the current presidential administration? So we looked into this, Josh did talk to DOLA as well. And yes, it's safe from executive orders, it's based purely on state plans. You already have that contract in place and there's no current ties to the federal government. We did also ask about the grant flexibility and DOLA provided the guidance that the grant can only be used for this project. If the project size decreased, um, the grant would be, need to be reviewed with your regional manager, Patrick. And the next question the board had, um, did the town qualify for the Inflation Reduction Act and investment tax credit? And yes, this would qualify, the town would qualify under the current adopted 2025 tax code. The town would need to file the project through the IRS and receive a direct payment back for either 25.5% or 30% of this total solar project cost. The third question was, would there, what would the cost of a replacement inverter be for the two proposed solar PV systems? So for the wastewater treatment plant, there would be, it would be $200 each for the micro inverters on each panel. There's 79 panels total, so around $15,000. Each of these does have a manufacturer warranty of 25 years. We would expect these to at least go that long. So it's gone up a lot in the past couple of years. It used to be a 15-year warranty, but now it's gone up to 25 years. And then on the water treatment plant, the expected replacement cost of the inverters, um, once they fail, would be $5,000 for the root mountain system and then $9,000 for the ground mountain system. Now, were there any follow-up questions to any of those three?
See, no.
No.
I wanted to bring up the fact that we had a meeting and it seems like we have meetings every week on this and at the last meeting I said, "Hold on. We're not ready to make a decision." At least that's what I think the trustees indicated at the last meeting because there's big financial decisions we have to make. You know, there's, there's other commitments we're looking for, the intersection, that kind of thing. And that we just need to take a break here for a few months and then we get in, get into it a little bit later on. And, uh, and that's kind of where I laid it out for them and they wanted to come back and answer the questions that you had from the last meeting. But I didn't want anybody to think, not understanding that I kind of told them to, "Let's put a hold on this for a while," because I think that's what you said at the last meeting, so.
Yeah, because how, how much do we have, and forgive me, how much do we have to pay for this and was it budgeted? In this year's budget to do this? Because I'm seeing $100,000 in sludge, which doesn't leave much room in reserves for solar panels right now. Like, my concern is more that than this.
Well, and then add to it, I mean, if we're going to make a decision to spend money like this, we need to take into consideration the interest as well. At the same time, which one is prioritized over the other? I don't want to lose the funds that we have that are, you know, we, we want the grant on. But I'm curious, how long do we have before we have to take action?
I think we, DOLA will give you, I think up to five years from the original award date. That's what it used to be. We can double check on that and I'm pretty sure that's a state statute. And so you will have some time. I know Durango, the city of Durango was in a similar situation and we were in the middle, probably about this point in their project and COVID hit and they had to, they also went through some turnover, as you all probably know. And so they waited until they got a new city manager on board and then, uh, delayed this for a little bit and then came back to it. And they were still. to it, um, and they were still able to retain their grant fund. The other thing is, we did include some of the sample performas in the board packet, so those are pages ninety-five and ninety-six, so there is some flexibility around funding, I think we talked a little bit last time about if the town chose to finance it, a lot of times that would delay the first payment for twelve to eighteen months, um, once that loan was secured, and then there are a couple of different ways, as you all know, that you can pay back the loan, like, there could be a different contribution each year, you could have an upfront buy-down, and then a lot of this project would actually be funded through the grant and through the util, your current utility budget, so you'd really just be saving money on your utilities and reallocating that towards paying off the project over the fifteen or eighteen-year finance term. I think we definitely need to wait, because we have to find out what those other things are, and I, I guess what you're saying on the financing, that there's some creative financing that we can do that kind of delays the payment, a little while, while for us to collect, you know, the, the, um, reimbursement, I guess you could say, from having the energy savings. However, I do think that it is a priority for us to get that East Intersection going, and of course, even more than that, we got to figure out this sludge issue, because that's wholly expensive as well, um, and that's going to hit our reserves big time, of course. And then you all are getting a new town manager, too, so it added a lot going on, so we just wanted to come back and make sure we answered your questions from last month, and, um, we can revisit this whenever you all are ready to revisit it, and maybe once a new town manager is on board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is on our action agenda, do we need to, do we need to?
You know, I would like to talk to Patrick. Um, I feel like we don't have, um, a really clear picture of the choices here, so she said that if we did not want to do the whole presentation of, um, improvements, that we could talk to Patrick at DOLA and find what maybe we could eliminate, that we would not prioritize in this energy performance, um, upgrade, and see, see what that would look like. I do think it's, I do think it's beneficial?
Um, okay, sorry, I'll just finish, and then I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Um, I do think that this, um, energy improvement, uh, when you look at the savings after we're out from underneath the cost, is really beneficial to the town, and I realize that it takes a while to get there. I was actually looking at also our summary of debt by fund, and when, um, these sewer funds, um, are paid off, and also the water fund is paid off, so we might be able to, um, replace one or two of these with the East Intersection and this energy improvement, based on what's available in the capital fund, um, and what we're currently paying in debt.
It really hurts, it sounds like somebody's taking a break, and then I start talking and somebody's talking, so I apologize if it's coming across.
Nope, I'm listening now.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, I definitely want to look at the other options as well, but I think, I think our, our, we should still take, we can back down the road a little bit and look at it later, because we have these other problems we have to take care of first, I mean, we got to figure out this sludge first. So I, I agree with you, yes, we'll look at it later, later down the road.
Yeah, I think so, too, we need to put this off, I mean, we got.
Five years, he said, or she said.
Yeah, I mean, we, we still have time, it's not like we can need to jump into this. Putting this on hold seems like the best idea.
I agree, I think we have plenty to worry about right now.
Other things?
So, again, the question was asked, Michael, um, this is on the action agenda item, do we need to take an action of sorts?
I, I thought this was primarily a informative meeting, and, uh, up for discussion, I'm not sure that there's really any action to be taken.
Okay.
I might have misplaced that, I made it, put it in the wrong spot myself.
She was just providing an update, and now we have it.
Does the board have any other comments?
No.
Moving on to.
I just appreciate you staying back and told us that information, so thank you, Ashley. Yeah, thanks for having us back.
Hey, Ashley, um, should we set up a meeting with, uh, Patrick to make sure if we go forward with these coping, this project any further, that we won't lose more than we want of that one billion we have secured?
Oh, that sounds like a good idea.
That's probably a good idea, just so Josh, you have that information available, what we're, the board?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Set up that meeting and get you guys some permission as I get it.
I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Moving on to the Public Works purchase order, uh, for the meter pits.
Yeah, so these are the meter pits we ordered last October. Um, we did get a quote for those, and you'll see that the cost is reflected in the water supply line item, um, so we moved that over. Typically, we're trying to keep ten of these in stock, um, since it's a twenty-six week lead time, we ordered thirty, I have ten of them gone, so I'm probably going to be looking for a quote for another fifteen more, uh, just because of the amount of time, but, well, we'd like your approval of the purchase, and then we can go ahead and pay the invoice.
This is all budgeted items, and, okay.
Yeah, it's just not in capital, it's in supplies, so.
Go ahead.
I was, I was going to make a motion, but if anyone asks questions.
Go ahead.
Nope.
Yeah, if anyone have, I'll, I'll ask later.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Public Works purchase order for the meter pits in the amount of twenty thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty cents.
And I'll second.
I got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro?
Yes.
Trustee, uh, let's give him over, Trustee Katsos?
Yes.
Trustee Marlin? Trustee McLaren?
Yes.
Mayor Ah?
Uh-oh.
Yes.
Uh-oh.
Well, this never happens.
You guys throw me a curveball, usually.
I just wanted to see what you were going to do.
Yeah.
Can we come back to this and let Mark talk about the fence?
Works, mate.
We need your vote, hurry up. We're voting on the meter.
And just a straight vote, there's not a denial in it?
Yes.
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 Trustee Hartz?
Yes.
Sorry.
Next up is Parks and Trails gate for Joe Stevenson Park.
You have to unmute Mark.
Mark?
Up. Talking, but we hear nothing.
His lips are moving.
Yeah, his lips are moving, but we hear nothing.
The other one, the right next to the one you just turned on, it says audio.
Give us a sign, Mark.
Somebody just want to say it for him, and he missed that.
He did put the map, and, that you guys requested, in there, um, and kind of a drawing of where he'd run that fence and the gate, um, to keep the people from cutting donuts out in the back of the park there.
I think we were all in agreement that it was a good idea.
We just wanted to know where and the cost.
So it looks like the total cost is about nineteen hundred and nine bucks and a few pennies, um, fifteen hundred for the town, and about four hundred for the rodeo association,
I guess something from them is better than nothing. I would have liked to have seen a split or something, but what are you going to do?
I, my only question that I had is, is that, I, I'm, I'm fine with Parks and Rec having a key to the lock, to unlock the gate, and probably the police, um, from the town, but the rodeo association, I mean, how many people are going to have a key? Is this going to be like a BP ke, gate, key for, you know, everybody has a BP key to get in any well pad you want?
Isn't it gaining their property? Like, isn't it gaining?
The rodeo.
My concern is how many people are going to end up with the key, I, if, there's so many peo, go ahead.
However, we can't, I don't think we can legally keep them from the property, and so they have to have a key.
Yeah.
No, my question was, is how are they going to control how many people are getting the key?
Right.
Like, how many copies of the key are they making?
Right, and are they just going to get passed around town so that the gate is ineffective, or?
So who owns the gate? We do, or the rodeo does?
Well, I think it's a, there's cost for both, so I would say both are contributing to the gate.
Well, and are we? From the phone?
Oh.
Oh, good, yeah.
You can get, you can get keys, maybe if you don't allow you to copy them, if you don't copy all the keys, you can't just go and make extra copies, so that, that is a possibility, if you go get those type of keys, and so you only are issuing a certain amount.
What does Mark say about the keys?
What about the keys, Mark?
The keys, we're, we're going to have a combination lock on, it could be the keys.
Oh.
Okay.
A shared combo between us and the rodeo association.
Mark, do you see any concern with the rodeo association's access and then shared access? Do you have any concerns about that?
I do not, I've spoken with the president of the association, Kyle, um, he is all for this project, um, I, I think if we were to move forward, um, we, we would want to meet and go over the project, um, apply for a permit, and have, you know, some type of written agreement between the two of us, um, and, and then move forward from there.
Oh, that's smart.
Is the school board going to be included in that, too, since it looks like this one gate is halfway on school board property and halfway on town property, or is it all on town property?
The, the gates, both will be on town property, um, there will be fencing on the rodeo association property, it's minimal, it's like twenty-five feet, um, on, both north and the south side of their property, uh, but the gates will be on the roadway, which is the town's.
Gotcha. Uh, Michael, do you have any thoughts about that? Any concerns with?
We really don't know much about the project to really even comment on it, I'm unaware of what's going on.
I was just thinking with the agreement, have, have Michael kind of button up the agree, the agreement?
My only thought is, if this is a combination lock, and, I mean, even town staff could come and go, that there just needs to be some sort of agreement in there that periodically the lock's going to get updated and the code's going to change.
Yeah.
And then all parties need to be aware of the change of code.
Yeah.
Because I can see, you know, someone from the rodeo association leaves, and they gave their kid the combo, so, I mean, I think to have checks and balances, the code just needs to periodically be updated.
All right, and so there are going to be two separate locks, one will be for the town, and one will be for the rodeo association, so they, they will have their own combo, become like a day-to-day combo in between the two of us, so they can open it when they need to go in, and we can open it out. That's how we currently operate the shared use facility of Public Works in the town.
Ah, okay. So, does that answer your concern, Mayor? Maybe?
To a point.
I'd rather have limited keys, I think.
Yeah. So we're going to open this up every morning, so the people can get to the skate park?
No, sir, um, there's going to be a pedestrian access, so people would park, um, on the, um, east side of the, the gate and walk to the skate park. The, the whole reason behind this is to keep vehicles out of there, because that's where all the reckless driving is occurring, while you have pedestrians walking around the park. So there will be parking on the, the other side of the gate, and they can walk through the pedestrian access, the access to park and the river, um, and then when we have our events for sports or the rodeo association, we can open the gates up, so there's additional parking, um, to accommodate all those vehicles. During normal park hours, those gates would stay, stay closed, only allowing foot access to the park from there.
Yeah, and definitely mitigating vandalism or destruction of prop, property.
And, you know, Erin, if we decide to change this in the future, it's a simple opening gate, I mean, this is to help us have more control of these problems, and, and, you know, get the park safer, for the people that are, that are walking through the park, um, you know, and, and to, to help mitigate the vandalism that's going on, so it just helps us, give us more control. Um, also for Fourth of July, and I think Dustin would agree, uh, would give us, uh, a better way of controlling, you know, the community, getting near all the fireworks that are being prepped during the day, and to check in vendors as, as they, you know, come in and out.
Well, it sounds like worst-case scenario, if something doesn't work out or something goes wrong, it's open during the day, but no one should be there at night, so then it's a matter of, at least at night, it's locked when people shouldn't be there, and then during the day, I mean, again, I, I, I think it's a win, if for twelve hours of the day, it's locked for cars and bigger access vehicles not to get in there.
And Mark and I discussed the combo locks, because that's what we have on the ball fields, and we have some of the same problems there, and so when we groom those fields, people throughout the community, the word is spread with the code is, so the code night would be nice for us to just go in and change it as well, and to bring up Fourth of July is a good point, because right in that area is what I call the blast zone, so you're right under the fireworks right there, so it is nice to maybe have a more physical barrier instead of those plastic, like sawhorses with tape, it would be nicer to keep people out of that region, because kids do run and play on that field toward that end, and keep them at a safe distance.
Well, it sounds like a win-win to me.
I think it's great.
Yeah.
I say we do it.
I don't have any problems with this.
Any other questions from the board? Looking for a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Parks and Trails gate for Joe Stevenson's Park as specified in, um, Director Mark Robinson's memo.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Zazaro?
Yes.
Trustee Hartz?
No.
Trustee Katsos?
Yes.
Trustee Marlin? Trustee McLaren?
Yes.
And Mayor Ah?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Bye, Mark.
Board of, uh, trustee reports and requests for future agenda items and committees, um, so I was approached by the, who are they? The museum people, and they have the old town door glass down there, I don't know what this exactly, this looks like. They're wondering if we would, I, I mean, it's the old glass type stuff, and it's got the town of Bayfield on it, and it's on the door, I don't know if a door's still attached to it, or, I'm not sure of that part of it, but they wanted, they don't want it, and they want to know if we want it, or if there's something we want to do with it, and I don't know what, I, I don't know, I'm looking for suggestions or ideas or ideas, or ideas, I'm looking for suggestions or ideas or something. They're trying to keep it preserved, obviously, because they're museum people, but they don't want it down there.
Can we take a look at it and see if it's, I don't, yeah.
Is there someplace we can...
Do we need to walk down there?
I can bring it down here and we can decide what to do from there.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, at least then they don't want it and they're not throwing it in the trash and we can see if there's something we want to do. Or we will trash it for them.
Yeah, or we can put it in the trash.
Yeah, right? Yeah.
I'm thinking it's, you know, I mean, it was the, it was the door that was on the front of the building, like facing the intersection there.
So is it a historical door? Or is it like a modern door?
I think it's an old, I haven't seen it.
A big, big old wooden door.
I think it's an old wooden door with a piece of glass on it, says town of Bayfield. And I don't know if it says anything else on it or not.
Is it stained glass?
I don't think it's stained glass, no.
Not stained glass?
I don't think so.
Jeremy, do we have someplace to store this door?
We can find a spot.
Okay.
If you guys want to take a look at it.
Yeah, let's do that.
I mean, we've saved the old sand maps and stuff like that and something that you guys would want to display.
Yeah, let's just see what it is.
Yeah, okay.
Do you need us to pick it up? I mean, we can pick it up and...
Can you take a picture of it?
I just have to coordinate with the Heritage Museum.
Yeah, you can help me. I had to set something up with her today. She was kind of pushing me. She's trying to get it out of the building. So I'm supposed to meet with her on 10 o'clock on Thursday morning.
Okay.
If somebody can help me, that would be...
We can load it at 10 o'clock on Thursday morning.
There you go, nice.
You're a great guy. You just saved me some hassles.
Yeah, well, we can get it out of there and then you guys can make a determination if it's trash or treasure.
Yeah, and I really don't, I have no idea what kind of shape it's in, if it's, I mean, they obviously think it's something worth preserving, but they don't want it down there.
Okay.
All right, let's grab it.
I'll get it on the calendar. We've got to do a water share up on Mill Street and then we'll be at the Heritage Museum.
All right, well, don't get the door wet.
Do the water first.
You'll probably freeze.
Do the water first and then keep the door.
All right. Trustee Hartz.
Nothing for me.
Trustee Katzos.
Well, Scott and I went to the Economic Alliance meeting on March 11th last Tuesday and they reported that they have contributed $580,000 to workforce housing, $409,000 to Project Run, which is a professional certificate program aimed at enhancing local workforce skills and economic mobility and then also building business capacity. They spent $143 in our community, meaning La Plata County, which was an investment strategy and then also the annual alliance summit. There was a representative from Senator Bennett's office and he reported that there is great concern with the reduced funding across the state of Colorado and the federal government and not quite sure how that's going to impact our small communities. We should have a better sense of that by mid-year. And then there's an extreme concern for the drought here in southwest Colorado. It's currently trending to be as bad as the 416 fire year. And then there's also very grave concerns about the lost Forest Service workers that were specifically trained and certified to fight these fires. And then just on a personal note, I am just so impressed with the people who work for Region Nine, Economic Alliance, DOLA. We are so fortunate to have such smart, capable and committed individuals in our community. They work their buns off to try to do really good things for our community and I'm really impressed and appreciative of that. So that's all I have.
Trustee McLaren.
I have nothing new now.
Trustee Marlin.
Yes, so I attended the regional housing award meeting and they approved the La Plata Housing Needs Assessment Report, but there were a couple caveats on there. On the report, there's one item we actually wanted to have fixed that wasn't super clear regarding present housing and future projected housing. So we're in the process of finishing that. One of the interesting things about the Housing Needs Assessment Report is that they do it within certain kind of state compliance and federal compliance so that you can use that report when you're trying to get grant funding for housing. And there was one statute that it didn't pass and it's a really difficult statute to get your report to pass. So they're still working on that and hopefully they'll be able to, you know, make an addendum to that report for that specific requirement. In addition, you know, they had, they had a bunch of DOLA come in and talk and they had Region Nine come in and talk. And one of the, one of the presentations that we looked at, I thought was kind of interesting because they provided us with numbers that the state has and the federal government has for how many homes are in Bayfield and how many people are in Bayfield and their numbers are way off from what they actually are. Their numbers are showing like we have 5,000 people that live in Bayfield and maybe one and a half times the amount of rooftops we actually do have. And so when we go to try to get, you know, when they do the statistics on our area, because they're so skewed, we don't get as much consideration because they're not, they're not reporting it correctly. So kind of we're trying to discuss on how we can fix something like that, but I just thought that was a kind of little interesting tidbit to know that they're so way off based on where we're at and that it does affect our community because they are not, you know, not doing it right. Anyways, that's all I pretty much had was the one meeting, so thank you.
Brenner, are they looking at the town of Bayfield or the address of Bayfield?
They're talking about the town of Bayfield, not the outlier area. That's considered coming there in their...
Okay.
So it's actually literally the rooftops they're saying that we have is like about 1.5 times the amount we really do. And then they said that we have like 5,000 people that live in Bayfield. So, you know, when you think about how rural a town is and what, what kind of, you know, grants and stuff like that we can get for our town, it just really, it's a bummer because they're thinking we're bigger than we really are.
Right. That could be a good one.
Trustee Nyberg.
Nothing.
Trustee Zazaro.
I have three things. The first, Bayfield Chamber of Commerce is meeting next week and I will be attending that in person. The Upper Pine has a board meeting on Thursday. I'm not able to attend that, but I have asked Kim to make sure I'm included when she sends out board packets and meeting minutes, so I'll have an update for the group. I'm in Telluride teaching a class on Thursday, so I can't make it. Third, was there a Board of County Commissioners meeting on the 13th? It's on my calendar. There's absolutely no logistics for it. I got a reminder. No one has accepted that calendar invite that I can see but me. So what's going on with those joint meetings so that if it does happen? They, because I saw that Katie canceled the December one. I remember that. But all of a sudden, I was like, I am not at this meeting at 7:30.
I actually got a cancellation about that. They were postponing it. I got, yeah, in my email, yeah.
I got a cancellation.
That's what that is?
That's what I did.
Okay, because that's, because I saw something come through and then I looked at my calendar and it's still there, so I wasn't sure what happened. So it was canceled.
Canceled, yeah.
So when those meetings do happen, because the next one's in June?
Yeah.
Can we, can they be on the upcoming dates of interest on the agenda by chance?
Oh, yeah.
That would be super helpful.
Upcoming on the date, on the dates.
Yeah, if I get any information on that, I'll definitely...
Okay.
Oh, there you go. Okay, I'll try to remember to send stuff to you.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see that it was canceled. I just saw that it was happening and I was like, oh, drat, I missed it.
Can you also make sure it actually happens? Because we haven't talked to the county in months and so we have no idea what they've got going on, how we can partner together, anything like those, that. And normally we have an update quarterly so that we're in fact, we're in county, I mean, they're, they're right there with us. They're our neighbors. We want to know what they've got going on.
So, Mark, do you want to coordinate that with the county as far as them? I mean, Steve, what am I saying? Scott, I'm, I, I am tired. I am tired. I am like crashing right now. I've been, I was up at 4:00 a.m. this morning, so I am like boo. So sorry, Scott. Is that something you coordinated? I first called you Mark, then I called you Steve.
That's me having fallen.
And I don't know what I'm saying now. So I'm wondering about you coordinating, having a meeting with the county commissioners, yeah? That we're feeling lonely.
Left out.
Yeah. We're left out and lonely.
Well, I think they canceled the last... I also want to find out about that money. They have another $700,000 for the Cinnamon Heights, I believe, the county commissioner, the one that was your mayor, which is named. So I want to talk to them about that, find out what's the next step of that.
Even if we get like a report from Matt Sulka, that would be good.
Yeah, that's Matt Sulka.
Yeah.
I will make some contacts.
Yeah, the last...
They've canceled the last three meetings on us.
Yeah, then we need to, I have to say, the comments to them that they've canceled the last three meetings. What's going on?
Upcoming dates of interest is the Board of Trustees meeting on April 1st and the Planning Commission on April 8th, perhaps. And with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 9:13.
Thank you.
I want you to read, that's the...
Next slide, be careful.
Bye, Brenner.
I don't know.